Call our in-person meeting to order. Sue, we got rise to a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which has its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
Sue, you can roll call, please.
Councilmember Groves. Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor Bor.
Here.
Motion to approve the consent agenda working.
I'll make that motion.
All support. Any discussion or changes? Everybody has the number for the DNR trust fund. Okay.
Should be in front of me.
Chief Stone. Motion and a second. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Bor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda. I just need to leave an address for Sue.
My name is Doug Martin. My address is 12815 West Island Drive here in Moore. And I just here, I apologize that I don't come to the meeting, that I've been asleep for the last six months or whatever. But I just, I really want to express my sincere concern for our town regarding all the cannabis places. And I'll tell you, it comes from a mom with six kids and we've been here 25 years. And I know there's not a lot that can be done. I guess I looked into that where you can't limit it. But it's become the location in West Michigan. And I have children now with childbearing agres, and they don't want to live with the whole name in it anymore. And it was a place where we, they were on the wrestling team, the football team. And I guess, I guess I'm becoming a bit devastated, but also willing to do whatever I can to catch up to it all. So I thank you all for what you do doing the decisions that I made. But I'm, I'm at the same time sad that they don't want to be around me anymore because, uh, because Hope's gone. So I just wanted to let you know that from my heart.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on to whole business. Number eight, COVID related.
Yeah, a couple things on this. Being that before, after our last council meeting, the day after the last council meeting, we were able to go to twenty gatherings of indoor, no more than 25. So that's, that's how we were able to have the meeting tonight. The, something I learned today, there was kind of a debate on the issue as to when the virtual meetings can end. And so you have the option right now, obviously, to have both of the virtual option along with the in-person option, which is what we're doing. However, after March 31st, the, the virtual option goes away other than in the situation of whether either A, Kent County declares a state of emergency, or if B, if the mayor declares a state of emergency. That's the, that's in the statute that was approved. Now, we don't have, don't have to make a decision tonight, but it's something I've already, I've already advised the mayor on that it's up, you know, it's up to him or the county. We don't know whether the county will. My guess is they probably will. In regards to the state extending the law passed March 31st, I don't see that happening. I don't see the legislature and the governor agreeing to anything right now. So I'm not, I'm not banking on that. But I am advising you of that. And that's really been it. I know a couple of the employees have gotten vaccines or signed up for their vaccines. So I know more and more are starting to get a one. And that's all I have.
Sure. Any questions for Mike on that?
With some of the restrictions being lifted, are we thinking about going back and will we even call them too young?
I was thinking about that. I probably, I would at least want to give it another couple of weeks before we did that. I just would like the opportunity for our staff to give the vaccinations so we can do that safely.
Is this a good time to ask if the funding you alluded to in your?
I was gonna talk about that in my budget.
Okay. I thought maybe that's a budget thing.
Yep, I was gonna talk about that in my budget.
All right.
Good. Showboat, anything on the showboat Jim first?
Uh, no, um, not at this point.
Okay, Mike, IT work?
Yeah, just real, real quick before I get into that, just a quick update. We did take bids for the full construction of the old DPW building. And also the alternate bid was just the bathroom. The bids came in for the bathroom, the bathroom, the low bid was about $367,000. And, and the low bid for the entire, to do the entire building was $800,000. The $800,000 was probably about the range where we kind of expected it to be for the whole building. We thought the 367 was kind of high. I'm going back, I've gone back with the, with the architect to see what we can value engineer to get the price down. I don't know how much we're going to be able to shave. But as of right now, the funds just isn't there to do, to do, to do the bathroom the way we would like it to be. So we'll be able to get, we'll be able to complete all our work with the showboat, Pit Wolverine, and all the contractors paid the full, all the consultants. But it, that's going to be something that I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that right now. So we're looking at, we're looking at alternative options for that.
The 367 isn't doable?
No, when we put our, when they put the budget together for the restaurant, they put a budget of around $160,000 plus dollars, something like that. And they would, like Mike said, everybody was surprised on how much they came in at.
Yeah, I, I initially thought it was, sometimes you get consult. This is a relatively small job. I've seen in my past history that sometimes construction firms, they, they put more into those smaller jobs, maybe in a way so they don't get it. I've seen that happen. And I thought that was what happened here. And I talked to the architect. And basically, there were a lot of plumbing and mechanical, electrical items that when we, when we did the projection, we just didn't have the, we just didn't have the, we didn't know that there was going to be the excess needs for the plumbing and HVAC and mechanical. It just was a lot more to me. Once, once we, you know, fully started engineering and looking at what it was, it was going to be, it was going to be a much more cost.
What about if we look into a unisex bathroom? It's a single, they're relatively inexpensive. And then, once the funding's there, it can always be had it into and then finished out.
It's not a bad idea.
It's a good idea.
Because I think with the budget that you have, you're probably fine. That'll probably fall more in line.
That's a good idea. I can, I can ask about that as well.
Cliff, quick update on tax dollars used for the showboat?
Uh, that would be zero, Your Honor.
So I can go to my next item if you'd like. So Attaches a proposal from Core High Comm who performs network work for the city to install the internet network from City Hall to the showboat. We're planning to install Wi-Fi on the showboat wirelessly from the city's current servers and network. It will fall under the same protections we have with our current system. Total cost for this is $7,332. This is over my approval authority and was not budgeted when we submitted the budget this past year. That being said, since this will be a, a meeting and gathering place, this is the most economical way to provide internet service to the showboat. In today's age, this is obviously a necessity. There are funds available in the, in the showboat fund, designated contributions to showboat donations expenditures for this. So there's funds available. And I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve it not to exceed the cost of $7,332 for Core High Comm to install a wireless network for the showboat.
Would, would that give Wi-Fi like on the whole Riverwalk?
No, it would be specifically for the showboat. I am actually, there's another program that might be available for it.
So would there be like a password that's given to the government on the showboat?
Correct.
Would you change that periodically?
Probably would have to.
Jim, seems like you're in the security and this kind of falls into your wheelhouse.
Well, I did look at the proposal. I did have a question. Maybe they're not here tonight, but maybe Mike can ask. I see they have a Dell core switch. It's only $410. A lot of those switches are a lot more than $410. So it's obviously a transceiver. I know for the card access system, the city will be putting in, I'll need at least one input on a switch. And I don't know if I can share that with the gentleman that are doing the cameras. I don't know what was in their board if they're providing a core switch to do the IP.
Let me, let me check with Betsy. She can answer that better than I could.
Yeah. And if she's got a question, she can just call me. But other than that, they look like they covered everything when I saw that. And I was going to get between point A, point B, and everything. That's, it looked pretty good.
All right, motion then to approve High Board.
I'll make that motion. Be approved.
I'll find out.
Okay. Discussion or questions? Sue.
Mayor Bor.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Social District.
Not much to update since the last meeting. My understanding, I wasn't here this country. I know the weekend before I left was pretty busy. I know it was kind of slow yesterday when I drove by Sunday. But I really, I really haven't had any complaints or anything about it. Seems to be like it's going along fine. I know Rockford just talked about today, they're, the street that they closed, they're actually talking about keeping it closed permanently. Obviously, we don't have those issues. But it, but they're also looking at keeping this little district permanently. So just to keep that in mind. So it's, you know, so far I haven't, I haven't heard anything that, you know, for those because of that.
Any issues, Chief?
Nope.
I, I was down Saturday night and the restaurants were packed. They were past 50% capacity.
Well, they weren't, they were exactly.
Tell you. That's right, though. It was worth it. And we had, some friends came in out of town and then we were done. And your officer does a fantastic job with the public chief. Which what? The young lady?
Just look.
Yes, yeah, does a great job. So just definitely.
And lowering the burn fits helped a lot. You know, a lot of people were extremely happy to see that, even though I just think that it got done, right? So moving in the right direction, I think.
Good. Anything else on the social district?
No. No change on that. As I talked to you before I left, we were, we're currently merged to a ballpark estimate. It's going to take about six to eight weeks to do that. I am, there is a, I am talking to a software company that focuses on pension software. It helps you manage your fund a little bit better than having to wait every year for the actual area. I am talking to them. I'm possibly considering requesting that in the budget for this year. Once I get more information on, if I, if I have the funds in the budget, I'll be putting it in, we'll be talking about it at that time. But that's all I have on merger.
Okay, new business. Number eight, we're going to open a public hearing for the Lowell Trailway Grant. Dave and Mark are here.
Thank you. I'll wiggle my finger. Thank you for having me. There's a couple items, just to get the order of the events. This is a public information meeting, public hearing on the grant application that you're considering to the DNR towards the Lowell Connection Project. And then Susan, pull that up. After I finish the presentation, you want to ask if there's any public input for people in attendance or online? And if not, we did receive a letter at the Lowell Area Trail Group. This person who lives on the trail road wanted this letter also read at the city council meeting because they referred to previous actions by the council. So I would like to read that. Then after the comment period, you would consider a resolution authorizing the submission of the application. Okay? So if Sue and I have this technology worked out, I'll be able to click through here. Thank you. So tonight, we're going to talk about the River Valley Rail Trail Connection Project. And Sue, not getting advanced.
If you tell an amusing story from sixth grade.
Look, I'm interested.
We did practice this before you got here. And the city manager and Sue and I will attest. But let's make sure it works.
Although, because he wouldn't let Mark, so.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate. This city's system isn't clicking through. So. I apologize for that. It was probably done before you have the virtual on there, which all the people. Yeah, it's something with the Zoom is not liking it. But, okay, let me proceed. We can follow up with graphics as necessary. This project, as you know, is necessary because we have rail trails that dead in on Foreman Street and dead in at Mont Carmel Avenue, a mile east of the city of Lowell. For over 10 years, the city and Lara have been working on ways to connect those two rail trail points. And the reason that we have to think about it so hard is that we are the only community in the 125-mile span between Owasso, Lowell, Greenville, and Elmo that doesn't have abandoned railway through their community. And the reason is, we're very fortunate to have a thriving business that uses the rail in King Milling. So as a result, we can't use that rail that goes through there. So we had to look at ways to connect those in other fashions. In 2015, the DNR funded a study where we looked at all different ways to do that. And for the last three years, we have been working with you and the Recreation Authority to raise grant funds and foundation funds for that project. Each year at this time, the DNR application process starts. And we've put in applications the last couple of years. But because the DNR process also requires that you have all of your matching funds in place before they'll award theirs. And we got right to the end. We weren't quite there, so we had to withdraw. So we're up now for the third time, and we believe that we're very close. Just to walk, again, I apologize without the graphic. And I'm going to say to the public that we have, the maps are online. You'll be able to get those at the city. And anyone that wants them can contact the city, and we'll get you these maps. But the trail is going to start at the end of our existing trail on the west end of town, at the corner of Alden Nash and Main Street at Ford Bueller, if you will. It's going to go across the street to the new township park. And it's going to use some of the trail that's there. And then we're going to proceed east through an easement, the new Grand Rapids gravel site, if you all approve for mining. They, as a part of that development, they agreed to allow an easement through there. We'll continue east behind the city's water treatment plant on the very backside of that property. And then a neat feature of this is we're going to go through Stony Lakeside Park. So you'll be able to, even if you go to Stony Lakeside Park and get on the trail there, or you get on the trail elsewhere, you'll be able to go through Stony Lakeside Park. I envision the pathway will go on the north side of the beach. And you'll be able to just take a day trip there or a couple hours or a few minutes. We'll continue there. And we're going to then head south towards the river and through private easements. We'll get to the first concern that we had in all of these alignments is how do we cross the busy street that we know as Hudson? That's a dangerous crossing for pedestrians. And what would it do? We're going to use that existing underpass, which may be where it is used during fair time, and come up into the fairground property or Recreation Park, as it's officially known. And then we're going to cross the Grand River with a new pedestrian bridge that is planned to be attached to extended piers off the existing Hudson Street Bridge. We've been talking with the Kent County Road Commission. They're not quite ready to expand that bridge within our timeframe. But they said what we could do is, is work with them and extend the piers out a little bit, attach our pedestrian bridge on. So it's something that will be useful to them in the future upgrading of that bridge for vehicles. At the same time, it will save a little bit of cost for the pedestrian bridge.
Hey, will that place on the east side of the, the bridge?
Right now, we're considering the east side of the bridge, yep. And so you'll go under Hudson. You'll come back up, and we'll sweep around, and we'll go over the bridge. And then we're going to, well, look at this.
I'm just over here pushing some buttons, you see.
This is how my life goes. So if this all works out, I'll get you through it. So back to this map. The grant applications are two separate grant applications. And because of that, DNR makes us break them physically out. Even though the project will be one project, they make us physically separate them in the grant application. So the city's portion are items one, two, three, four, five, and six. So one is the township park, two is Grand Rapids gravel, three is the water plant, four is Stony Lakeside Park, five is the private easement to go under Hudson, and then six is the bridge. When we do the grants, the goals to get more points are connect the parks, access to natural resources, and safe, non-motorized transportation. And if you're wondering if we have any parks in this area, I wanted to highlight those. And we're going to start up at the connection on Foreman up by Metric. And we go by Creekside Park on the existing trail and then come down the existing A1 trail. And we're able to cross M21, another impediment, with a safe light there. We have a lit crossing instead of a mid-block crossing. Then we're going to get to the new township park that it also has a bridge there to the South Township Park. Of course, tremendous amount of facilities here. And one of the things that the grant programs like is that we're connecting people to these uses. And I, I think we've all been out there. If you haven't, they have ice cream. That's all I'm going to say.
Why don't you put pickleball on there?
When you're bicycling, you're very tired. You don't have time for pickleball, but they have that. They have that. I did pickleball, and it wore me out. Stony Lakeside Park, again, all types of amenities there that are attractive to folks that can get there from the trail. Talked about the safe crossing and the underpass. Here's a photograph of that. And there's, in our frequently asked questions, it's going to come up, some concerns about this. And then what we call the fairgrounds, but it's also formerly Recreation Park. And as you know, a master plan or a vision, if you will, if this was done a couple of years ago. So at some time, we all hope in the community that something will be there after the, the fair leaves. And so that'll be another stopping point. And then we get to the new bridge. And again, a blow up on Google Earth. Again, we'll go under. We'll have to do a loop-de-loop and go back, go over. And then we're going to cross the railroad tracks. That's a railroad spur that's used about six times a week, I'm told. And we're going to, now we're into the Lowell Area Recreation Authority's side of the project. So I'll just go through that quickly.
Hey, Dave.
Yeah.
Real quick, that under the bridge? And then it comes up back around there?
Yeah.
Is that going to be set up differently? So it's not affected when it's two feet underwater?
Well, we'll cover that in the effect, the frequently asked questions. Yeah. And just back to Mr. Salzweedle, a question will be on the east side of what we're envisioning. Okay, now into the, into Lowell Area Trail side. We're going along Grand River in easements from the railroad and from a couple of property owners that we're seeking. And you'll see a little jog in the alignment there. And that's because those two homes are very close physically to the roadway. While we could legally be in, put the trail in the road right-of-way and go in front of those houses, it would disrupt their use tremendously. So what we're asking to do is to go behind that in railroad and private right-of-way to avoid that. And then we're going to get back in the right-of-way. We wanted to go behind these two properties. Those folks really weren't interested currently. We're going to keep talking to them. And then we're going to get back and get back in the railroad right-of-way and then head east. Section eight is something that's new from the last time that we looked at this grant. Last time, we stopped at South Jackson because we thought the rail trail folks were going to do that part. They're not able to. So we got an extension in the grant to add that one-mile portion from South Jackson to Mont Carmel. Okay? And that is on abandoned rail bed. And that will totally complete the 125 miles. There will be no gap. So here we are at South Jackson, looking east a mile to Mont Carmel Avenue. And here we are at Mont Carmel Avenue, looking east to Serenac. It's Serenac with an A. The signs, whoever made the signs, they've got a punchless item in sore on that. But it's, if you go there, it'll be Serenac. So schedule 21, we're going to finish securing funding. 21, 22 is when you would design it. Because the majority of the funding, or even if they had a dollar, the MDOT is involved. So they will bid the project. They take that responsibility. And then it's proposed. These monies are for fiscal year '23. So it would be built starting in October '22 and finish in the summer of '23. This is a 5.755 million dollar estimate. It's down. It was over $6 million at one point. But if you recall, we eliminated one bridge. We'll talk about that in a minute. To date, we have commitments for everything but 1.15. And the $300,000 that you're asking for and the $300,000 that Lara is asking for, we'll bring that total down to $515,000 is the gap. And Mark Anderson, I'll bring him up in a second. And he's done a tremendous amount of effort. But I wanted you to see. MDOT is at $2.9 million. They raised that from the original. We've got money from the Recreation Trails Program. The Community Fund has increased their donations. The Meyer Foundation is at $500,000 currently. And we're knocking on their door politely asking for some more. As you know, the DDA is contributing to the project. So we've come a long way from the original breakdown. Tonight, like I said, we had to break the project into two projects for the grant. Your side of the ledger is this $4.79 million. And distributing the funds, you are responsible for that on this ledger. And see how that breaks down with Lara. Okay, I'm going to go through these fairly quick. And these are also available on the webpages for Lara and the city on the Facebook page. But here are some of the bigger ones. Will the trail be paved with gravel? It'll be asphalt from Main Street all the way to South Jackson. And then using the material that's already being used from Mont Carmel to Serenac and from Virgen's to Bellic, crushed asphalt. It's a great material, though your city manager has ridden it. And we both survived. It's a good material. It's better than, I believe, than the limestone because it holds up better, it drains better. So it's very rideable. Why does a trail have to be 10-foot wide? And not only does the trail have to be 10-foot wide, but if we have a bridge like this one that's on Phase 1, that has to be 14 feet wide. that's on Phase 1, that has to be 14-feet wide. And the reason is that we have federal money. The federal regulations is 10-foot wide trails, with two-foot clear space on both sides. So when you have a bridge, you have a 10-foot trail, and you have two feet to the railings, if you go to Ada or another community that's funding their trails through a millage, or some other non-MDOT way, they can have their trails as little as six feet. And so that's the difference. It makes the trails very expensive, but that's what we're getting for the almost $3 million that MDOT's offering. You can kind of see in the middle a typical sidewalk. It really is, the 10-feet allows two-way traffic. Sidewalks, obviously, are not intended for that. Why is this route different than the one you presented in earlier years? This is the last route that we had, and after we crossed under Hudson, we went through the fairgrounds, and we had envisioned a bridge over the Flat River going through what we call a Moose Rogers property, under the railroad spur and down south, vision South Jackson. And the reason, it took about a year of discussion with the railroad that serves King Milling. It also, Laura had to invest over $12,000 just to apply, to talk to these folks, to get an answer. And the answer after all of that was, we don't want anyone going under our railroad tracks for legal and safety reasons. This is the existing trestle that's out there that folks who hike in the North Country Trail go through, but they just weren't comfortable giving us permission. So we had to come up with another route, and that's why we ended up where we're at now. Why are we building bike trails when our roads are falling apart? Is a question I always get. Just so you know, these are federal and state funds that are only available for trails. They are not available at all for any other use. So whether you go into your state legislator or federal legislator, these funds are earmarked at those levels for non-motorized transportation. Just as a matter of interest, only 2% of the federal transportation budget is assigned to non-motorized transportation, nationwide. The DNR Trust Fund is generated, funds generated from oil and gas revenues, was created back in the '70s, and it is only for parks and park land acquisition and park development. Trails are considered a park facility. And last, I wanted to say to the folks that wrote this, Lowell is fixing its roads. As you all know, we're struggling with revenue sources from the state, but the city is actively, in the last few years, picked up what they're doing. This year, we have Jane Allen, Amity, they're being constructed, Monroe's coming, Washington. So there, there is not a federal funding source that's significant, but Lowell is fixing its roads. But I know it's really hard to see a brand-new bike cap go up near Lowell.
We ran into the same thing at the show, why are we taking money from the state and using it on a boat?
So the mayor asked, won't the trail get flooded at the fairgrounds area elsewhere? Obviously, with that bridge, we're going to do what we tend to keep it as high and dry, but I had to, MDOT took me to task on this, and they said, this thing's going, MDOT's job, MDOT's, MDOT's goal is not recreation, it is moving people, whether it's in vehicles or non-motorized. So they treat this like a road. And they said, we wouldn't knowingly build a road that's going to flood and prevent the use. So what are you going to do? We had to tell them, look, we live in Lowell, and we have to cross two rivers, and it's going to flood. There's no way around it. There's no route that we can have that will eliminate that. We can't afford to build a 20-foot-high bridge across the community. So we negotiated, and we said this, when it floods, obviously, we're going to have to not use it. And MDOT being, being, it's formal, formal response was, we're going to have to sign it as such, so we'll have something like this, that the trail is closed, and we will actually have to have a detour route for those days that the trail is flooded. We'll have to tell people, go down this street, walk on the sidewalk, come around, and this is how you'll get from A to B. And it's unfortunate, but we've all of us here have lived at least through 2013 and 2018, and it's going to flood.
Is there a pedestrian crossing at Hudson and Grand River? There isn't, right?
There's, there's a light, but not a cross, right. Why isn't the trail using the new Lowell Township Park Bridge, and then continuing east on the shoulder of Grand River, or parallel to the road? Great question. Hopefully, you've all begged to this wonderful facility in the Township. So, the main reasons are, number one is, and I've laid that route out in this pink dash down here, number one is it totally bypasses the city. The city in this relationship is the one that can apply for MDOT funds, because you're an Act 51 agency. Laura can't. So Laura would have to have gone to the county and asked to do that on behalf, but since this is primarily a city-funded project through the grant, number one, it bypasses the city. Also, in the trail master plan that the state did, they see Lowell as a hub of communities for the trail system. So we didn't think that totally bypassing the city was going to be beneficial to that goal. Second, it eliminates the park connection to Stony Lakeside Park, and also to the fairgrounds park. Again, one of our goals was to connect these things. Three, it's not safe to use widened shoulders for this use. Some of our large private funders said they would not participate in any part of the trail, or they wouldn't participate in the trail if we were using on-street trails, which are allowed, but they said that's not safe. And when you think about, we see folks who are using this trail now on, off of Foreman, and I live over there, and I see them every night. It's pulling trailers, kid trailers and elderly folks. We don't want to be directing them to the shoulders of the road. I mean, it's okay to be out there, but we just didn't. And then, it's not really feasible to build off-road down there. If you've driven that, there's a lot of gullies, there's a lot of big hills. Money wasn't an object, and easements were an object, you maybe could do it, but not within the scope of this project. And last, this requires a surface crossing of Grand River Avenue twice and Hudson Street. So first, as soon as you came out of here, you would have to do a mid-block crossing Grand River Avenue. Again, we all know that live here locally, that's a very fast travel.
Five hours.
Then when we got down, when we got down to the intersection with, at Segwin and Segwin slash Hudson, we'd have to cross it again to get back, and then we have to cross Hudson Street. So, all of those interactions would make it a little more dangerous. I stumbled on this slide from a presentation I did in Rotary in 2011, I just thought I'd share it. Took, this was for Phase 1 of the trail system. It took 10 years from concept to completion. And here we are now, 10 years from that point on Phase 2. In between, Lar and the city have done Phase 1A from Alden Nash, from G Drive to Main Street. We also did the little segment off of G Drive behind Tractor Supply. So a lot's been done, but these things take a long time. When folks ask me, we're starting new trails, I'm, how long does this usually take? I don't, I don't want to show them the slide. So, Mark and I are both here, if you have questions, Mark in particular, if you want to say anything about our funding.
Well, if we can go back to that map, just for a quick second.
Yep.
You know, you've heard Dave's, I was teasing Dave last week, I've heard his presentation so many times in the last couple of months, I'm like, I just wanted to reiterate what David talked about with our connection, and to know what our thought process was as we were designing this trail. It isn't like we just, Dave took this green marker and said, this is where the trail's going to go. We actually walked all these, and then we had a long thought process of this, of how are we going to touch everything in our community? So, when we do this trail, the first with the Phase 1 and Phase 1A, we're obviously connecting our schools, we're connecting most of our community to walking to school. Now we're connecting all four of our parks, which Dave pointed out, and we're connecting to our north park and our south park. The other interesting thing is, if you don't think about it, is if you go to this end of town, and you're standing there, and you're going, wow, there's going to be a trail here. Now all these people from this end of town can safely get to all of our parks, all of our schools, everything else. The other cool part of this design is when we come down Grand River, or coming through the fairgrounds, as Dave mentioned, the North Country Trail has a potential to come through the fairgrounds and not go through this wetlands over here. So that's another benefit of this design. You know, the tough part is, as Dave mentioned, when we get over onto the Grand River section of it, it's not an area, this is our fourth, I think this is our fourth option for the trail on this side. Ideally, it would have been great to go through all that wetland property, but it wasn't possible. Going down Grand River, ideally, we'd like to stay away from the road, period, not have the road, or the trail be even close to it. But this route is probably the best route that we're going to have. Is it great? No, but we're going to try to have the least amount of impact on people on this road as we can. But again, this is our last option. I also want to point out how important it is when we're going to do this bridge, because we only have one opportunity to put a pedestrian bridge and to have, be state-funded. There's no way our community would ever be able to afford this. So I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that how important this is, and this is really probably our last chance. The funding, we're close, I still feel pretty confident about it. We went back to Meyer, and we still have a couple other foundations that we're looking at. Just one last thing, when we were talking about grants, you know, there were some questions, and there were some concerns at our Laura meeting, was, is that if we don't apply for these grants, whether it's MDOT or MDNR, somebody else is going to, somebody else in Ionia or Bellic, someone else is going to be doing this. So selfishly, we need to take advantage of these when we can, because this is a wonderful project, and this is eight miles of paved trails that we will now have in our community that will touch just about everything.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark, when you say it's your, our last chance, so there's nothing after this grant to go in another couple years and look again, or it's done and considered a trail, this is a non-connecting community, or we're going to continue to try, even if it's not approved in this next grant?
The original grant offer by MDOT, who was the largest donor here, was in 2018. And as you can imagine, they have requests for more than they have money all over the state. They have graciously allowed us to stay on, even though each year we say we don't have the management of a match. And then this last one, they said, you know, we're really, one, we can't guarantee federal funding, and two, we have a lot of folks we've put on hold, so we really need to wrap this up. And I'm not saying that they wouldn't, but we really have to do some begging to get them to extend it again. So, and plus, we want to, we don't want to lose the momentum. If we think that we can just let it delay again, it'll be another 10 years, and luckily for Mask, you can't see, but when I first did this presentation, I didn't have any creating. There you go.
I'd like to see City Lowell be a gaping hole in a 100-mile trail system. That'd be embarrassing.
This is, this is the most expensive section of the 125-mile trail, and that is because of the challenges that we have to get through our town.
So the council at this point can ask for public input here or online first, and then after that's done, or if there is none, I do have a letter that I should read into the record.
Do you want to start with your letter, then you'll have to?
If you'd like.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Yeah. This is from Sharon Bonzek, and I apologize if I didn't pronounce that right. She lives at 13393 Grand River Drive, and she is one of those two homes that is built very close to the road, and that we're electing to go behind so as not to disrupt them. She sent this to the Lar Board, but I think it's important that everyone hear this. I forwarded to you my letter from one year ago that was sent to be read at the Lowell City Council meeting for March 16, 2020. Our views have not changed since that time, so I'd like to submit this letter again. Would also like to have the following comments. At no time have we had anyone stop to see our property and how this all affects our home and life, as we were told that they would at the March 11, 2020 meeting we attended. That would have been the Lar meeting. No one from Lar, the Township, or City Council, no one before or after, great communication there. What is most upsetting was to watch the City Council meeting from 3/11/2020. Have this letter read, and hear the city manager ask if all the neighbors were happy with this proposed trail. It's pretty clear by my letter, we are not. As far as all the neighbors being happy, besides myself and my husband, the only other neighbor there also voiced his opinion on this, and isn't pleased with the location either. Had we not informed our neighbor of this meeting, he would not have known of it. Mr. Greg Canfield answered the city manager, telling everyone left happy. Not true. People live here for many reasons, not everyone needs a ton of trails. It seems the way things are done around here are to let people find out after the fact. So just keep your opinion to yourself, because no one wants to hear them. I realize everything can't be changed for a few people. However, Lowell, both Township and City are demonstrating that they could care less what the people think, and what their ideas are all that matters. Seriously, how can you have not had a clear plan with a starting point and an ending point on this trail after 10 years? It has to keep being changed, because what you thought would work won't, and we're being told it's going to happen, so we have to accept it. Try reaching out to the people whose homes you are planning to involve in your big ideas before you move on from ones. Can't come close to expressing how upsetting and disgusting this planned trail has made us, Sharon Bonzek. We will be including that letter in the application package to DNR. And any other, of course, that is sent to, we have an online forum, an input session as well. So, Sue, I don't know if there's anyone else?
Sharon, is there any question? I don't see anybody raising their hands.
Anybody in the public here? All right, then we will close the public hearing. Thank you, guys. Moving on, I'll refer a motion to approve Resolution 521 for the adaptation of the DNR Trust Fund Grant. Application.
I make that motion.
I will support. Motion in a second. Discussion or questions? Sue?
Councilmember Saul Svidon.
Yes.
Councilmember Ninkovich.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeWor.
Yes. Now, last on Little League Park, you have a chance on here, Mike?
Yeah, Mike's open. A new season of Lowell Little League is just around the corner. Back in January, the city approved a new process and new fees for use of the available baseball fields on city property. The new process involves putting together a yearly schedule for use for the fields, and allow Lowell Little League to work with other user groups to schedule field use and share the fields with them. The new fees to be charged will be $8 per day for field. Lowell Little League will be charged $5,200 for the yearly charge for the field. For handling the scheduling with the other groups, Lowell Little League will be able to recoup some of their reservation costs back as they share the field use with other baseball groups. City attorney drafted, put together a new public park use agreement to cover this new process and fees. Lowell Little League has seen the document, provided their input, and have indicated they are in agreement. This is ready for City Council approval. Once approved, we will schedule a meeting between City, Lowell Little League, and the other baseball field users to go over the new processes and fees. After that meeting, final scheduling can be completed, and the new baseball seasons can begin. I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council approve the public park use agreement with Little Little League at a fee of $8 per field per day, which is total $5,200.
All right. Any questions for Mike on that? All right, now I'll look for that motion.
Move, or we accept the resolution.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Sue?